County Administrator for follow up. And as a reminder, if you're here for public comment, we ask that you step up to the podium so that you can be properly heard. So with that, is there any public comment?
Robert Grant, seventy-five, eighty-nine, County Road thirteen, Minnesota, Minnesota, that I own the land that you're gonna try to, that you sell that you want to take from the B side corridor. And so you should have received an email from my lawyer, my hired attorney, and also been talking to the state aid, and trying to go over the federal bed. But if you flood my son's house, plan on a lawsuit, I've already got it in works because my land is all dipped down in a hole, you build a bridge, and it's gonna fill that whole flood fringe, the flood fringe is gonna fill in the building road, it's gonna back water up in my son's house, and that's not, I'm not gonna go there. You wanted to wait until you flooded, but I'm coming forward right now to tell you, no way Sam would butt, it will get flooded. I talked to state aid, they'll back me, the state of Minnesota will back me on this because you build a bridge it right there, you're gonna bottleneck it, and you can, all the water comes out of Springer's field through my, by my house, and it's gonna be right there with the roads. And so I'm just giving you a heads up that I've retained an attorney, and he wanted to wait, and I didn't want to wait because I don't believe in spending taxpayers' money foolishly. And I'm not in it for the money, I just want to help my sons, because he lives in a, in a lower level, there's not two levels in the house. And we've had water come up close to our place, but the flood fringe absorbs all the water, and you're just gonna cause me, and my son, a lot of headaches, I'm gonna sell me a tour of the contract for being the house. And so I'm just giving you a forewarning. Like I said, my attorney told me, you want to just wait, I don't want to get flooded. I worked on bridges for forty years, I've seen what happens with water and bridges, and how fast it backs up. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, bud. Any other public comment?
Can I just talk, can I give you a public comment? Daddy Iverson, I live out of the bad township, and I guess the biggest thing is for everybody's good that's here. I live right on the corner of Forty-third and, and, and what, I think it's Clermont Road now, I'm not really sure what, somebody's gonna get hurt in there. And, and that somebody was just about me. I'm just gonna tell you a little bit about my year. I got hit on my lawnmower. My mailbox has been off four or five times, so I had to move my mailbox. They ran through my garage and totaled my car and my pickup. And then the worst thing that happened, that my daughter was there. A guy came down forty-three, he coming south, was gonna make the turn on one-seventy-one, couldn't make it. So where did he go? He came right across my yard. If somebody had have been going into my garage, there's a dead person. All I'm saying is that who makes, I wanna know who makes these decisions on where, you know, they built a new road and everything, and then all of a sudden, this traffic start coming, you people gotta be aware of that. I mean, because it does interfere with your stuff. If somebody gets killed down there, I mean, that's gonna be a big deal, because that is not legal. And you've got, you've got fifty-three-foot tankers that are parked in the middle of seventy mile an hour traffic, waiting for a train to go by. Well, everybody's got one of these, and they're not paying attention most of the time. Saturday is a prime example at two-thirty in the afternoon. My wife doesn't let me drink anymore because she says I'm obnoxious enough, this is the way I am, so just please don't do that. And I was sitting outside with my dog, and all of a sudden, there was a tanker there to their train boom. And all of a sudden, the brakes were coming, we can still see it, the marks are still there. The guy coming behind in a Jeep, a black Jeep, wasn't paying attention, and all of a sudden, there's a tanker with eight thousand gallons of gas, and a car behind him, and this guy was gonna stop. So he hit the brakes and swerved into the other lane, and down there went in a ditch, but there was nothing coming from the west heading east. If there would have been, you would have had another thing. I've got Mr. Thiele standing right there, and he can tell you how many times he's put people out there because there's an accident on that corner. All right? All I'm saying is before somebody, I worked for the state for forty years, I worked for his dad, you know, and he'll tell you, I'm really kind of a dink, but at the same time, at the same time, I really care about these things out there. And I've been there for fifty years, and, you know, so, I mean, you're not talking about a time here, but I don't want somebody dead. You know, I picked that lady up and the car got going on fire, I mean, I couldn't get her on the seatbelts, I cut the seatbelt. Mr. Melby, I picked him up when he got T-boomed out there. We gotta do something out there. I don't know what it is, I don't know what you have to do, but it's for your interest. Something, is, somebody's gotta take a look. And, and, and I'm sure Mr., you know, our sheriff will tell you that. And that's night, you know, the Mayor John Cole?
Yes, sir.
I hate to cut you off, but you have a two-minute limit, we have a lot of people.
Okay. I appreciate your comments. My wife don't let me drink anymore.
And that's, that's fine. Thank you, we appreciate it. Any other public comment?
Good evening, my name is Matt Sunday, twenty-five, nineteen, Stony Creek Drive here talking about the East Side Corridor project, for which we just heard a little relief earlier this evening. Mr. Iverson's right, I mean, we've gotta do something about safety of roads in Owatonna and Steel County. We just heard about Third Street, speed limit thirty miles an hour, people going through there eighty miles an hour, and somebody just got killed from that. And here we got the East Side Corridor project, which is being proposed right next door to a residential neighborhood, where the side of the development starts fifteen feet from somebody's kitchen window, for God's sakes. And the government paperwork just came back, as you saw earlier, with three alternatives, and within a matter of days, both alternatives are struck except the one that goes next to all these homes. Which tells the citizens, you didn't even look at the paperwork, you didn't even alter, you know, look at the alternatives, and choose which one makes more sense for Owatonna, and being that close to the residents. That's what it tells us. This project, admittedly by the county and the city, is unprecedented for Steel County. Never before has this been done to put a roadway at this speed and this magnitude this close to residences. Never been done in Steel County or Owatonna, and yet here we are with all these traffic concerns, and we're getting ready to do this, and we're gonna do it right there. Two thousand and eleven, the study that was done on this very corridor project came back and said Thirty-Fourth Avenue was the recommended, recommended road, just a half mile down the road. And yet we've struck in that for some reason here in twenty-twenty-four, when we have developments on the east side of town even closer to this development, this proposed development. So it doesn't make sense to us, we're not sure what's going on, but the county and the city seem to may have reminds that Twenty-Ninth Avenue was the preferred corridor before you had to go back and conduct this more thorough investigation and study. Government gets involved, and now it's a choice to yours to which alternative to take, it's still Twenty-Ninth, for some reason it's still the preferred alternative, we don't understand that. However, we do like for you to make safe decisions for us, your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Good evening, my name is Gail Robinson. My address is two-forty-nine East Main Street, I'm right on the corner of, uh, Main and Grove. I'd love to talk about the proposed highway plan. It affects me and more than it affects my neighborhood. I live on a historic Main Street, it is a residential area, and these proposed roundabouts are going to affect the residents' ability to park, to get deliveries, to be able to get in the driveways, to get into their alleys, to maintain their property, send their schoolchildren off to school. People who need a medical handicap van will be able to access it. Also, it's going to encourage people to, to speed, you know, the whole thing about roundabout, you wanna get in there before everybody else does, because you wanna own the roundabout to get where you're going. And that's just gonna make people accelerate, they're not gonna be waiting for a stop, they're gonna be accelerating through them. And when you have children, there's a school nearby, who are in the crosswalks, or a ball runs out in the street, that's just gonna make it ten times worse. In addition, in general, the speed limit seems to be lower than that area, the whole downtown area, residential areas, because like my neighbors in that set over on Third Avenue, there's accidents, it's determined, why you're today tonight, because we're starting about the craziness over in his neighborhood, we've all heard about the East Side Corridor. And in addition, roundabout, at least by me, is gonna make a serious drainage problem too, because it's on the smog. So all that water's gonna be coming into my basement, you know, my new house has been there before eighteen-seventy, and I'd like it to be there, you know, through my lifetime. So thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Other public comments? We have time for one more before we have to break. Step up to the podium, please.
This is for the five-year highway plan? Yeah, the podium, because this hearing says it started at five-thirteen.
It's five-thirteen, you got two minutes.
Yep, we're in just a public comment, sir, this is not the hearing for the sales tax.
You got another chance. All right. Any public comment beyond that?
I'm Lori Orton, ten-sixty, country view, I think a lot of us have questions like route four and five were eliminated from the East Side Corridor project. And when I look at Imagine Owatonna, it does look like, it's getting, and from your presentation there, it does look like Thirty-Fourth Avenue will potentially connect to thirty-five at some point. That sounds like a really right way, no, do I understand that right? What does that mean?
It is connected.
Not connecting, okay. When I was talking to the, you know, that lady, she was saying something different. Anyway, so we have a lot of questions on why those two routes were eliminated, and I think before we move forward, we'd really like to know why, and the presentation will be very clear of what, why those two routes were eliminated. And it looks like Owatonna's estimated to grow about eight thousand in the next, by twenty-fifty in the Imagine Owatonna project. As I said, about nineteen percent of the houses required would be residential homes, so that's about eight hundred homes, as they're estimating, and just curious if that's in your minds, you know, if I was making a decision, you're working for the city, like, we're not just thinking about today, but twenty-fifty, what is, what's this town gonna look like? What are we gonna need? Is this East Side Corridor, I'm squishing it in too quickly, I mean, we, I love, I wanna look fast, I wanna get where I wanna go, but I want it to be safe, right? I don't want it to be buttoned up against the house. So you're kicking that road out, giving those residents plenty of space, or give us a road that we can grow into. I think, to me, sounds more logical, so I'm sure that's all in everybody's mind, but that's kinda what you're thinking about. As, as a young family and someone who's gonna be in Owatonna for all these times, those are my thoughts on what you're thinking about. Those are the questions. So can you request a follow-up answer? Can I, can I put a form of request, like someone will get back to us on why route four and five were eliminated, is that part of this process? You can request it, okay. Please request me.
All right, thank you. So it is five-thirteen, we'll come back to public comments, we have to open our public hearing now. Open our public hearing, Highway Capital Improvement Plan, it's on page sixty on your board packet. I'm gonna need a motion to open the public hearing. Motion is your second. Motion is second, open the public hearing, any discussion? Are there none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Our public hearing is open.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. As you heard in our work session here, we presented the Capital Improvement Plan here. The purpose of the tonight's hearing is to hear public comment regarding the use of the local option sales tax. Sales tax that was body approved back in twenty-fourteen, which gives us significant revenues into our program here. So we are looking for comments on that, so for your sake and for the public that are here, we've got a presentation here to present to you, so.
Which one are you going to present?
The same one we did the, the work session.
So, Becca, is it in the packet? It is not in the packet, is that right? So it's on page sixty, then. Circle.
Is it something other that, that's in our packet? We do have, it should be back, it's page sixty, all the way through page one-sixty?
It is in the packet, okay.
Yep.
Page sixty, sixty-one. Still on the overhead?
I'm good for the, for the, sure.
So Paul, what's in the packet is the actual draft plan? And so?
Yeah, we're not gonna go through every page of the draft plan, that was maybe helpful for people to see, but I just wanna give a, a brief summary of what's in that plan here, and that's in the presentation. It would be easier to just show a presentation.
Do you want us to walk the board, what's relevant from the sales tax perspective? Do you just want that chart, since this is only about the sales tax?
So isn't the purpose of the meeting tonight to gather public input?
Relative to the sales tax, yes. Let me get to the funny page, I'm sorry, just taking a moment here.
Okay, as part of our Capital Improvement Plan, we have many uses of, many sources of funding, but what we're hearing, in the public hearing tonight, is the use of the sales tax. On average year, we're collecting about three-point-five million dollars in sales tax. We have many other sources of funding, roughly about nine-point-four million total, that come in on a regular basis, in addition to various other grants and federal, grants and other funds that come in, so. Tonight, we're specifically considering that three-point-five million in sales tax. So, um, that's, next slide. So in, so I'm just gonna highlight the projects in particular that are gonna be in this next year's budget here. The highway road construction projects are fully funded outside of the county levy, we do not spend any levy in the road construction program here. A large part of that is because we have the local option sales tax. Without that funding, we would certainly probably have to consider bringing in a county levy to pay for our projects here. So it's, it brings a great benefit. Some of the funding, one of the things that we, whether I have it identified in the specific line items in the CIP or not, we, with our resolution that I asked you to pass here, we ask that the sales tax be considered for any project within the five-year plan, so that if things change, budgets or whatever reasons, but the, we still have the ability to use the sales tax, even if it's not specifically called out for use of sales tax. So, so just kind of briefly, for the public's sake here, we went through it last hour here, but projects that we are looking at for next year and twenty-twenty-five, was the Highway twenty-eight project around Beaver Lake, that, that's part of the program, next slide. We'll consider some rehab projects, these involve renovating up the existing asphalt pavements and resurfacing it, so these products include Highway twelve and twenty-three at the, in Medford, in front of the Medford Mall, and the County Forty-three in the Bennett Township, and County Forty-seven in Fixbee Lane, in front of the Fixbee Field Mall, next slide. We have a maintenance overlay project, it'll be basically started here on the north limits of Owatonna, and it's extending up to the North County Line. We've got a couple of projects for drainage improvements, next slide. And then bringing in sales tax as well for our bridge projects, we have four county bridge projects here. Township bridge projects are not part of the sales tax, those are funded with the Town Bridge Program outside of us, but the county is a, is used as a technical resource for the township, so that's why it's in our budget, so. So, in twenty-twenty-five, our budget is proposed here, we have fifteen million dollars in construction projects, two-point-seven million, and is dedicated for design, preliminary engineering, we got about two-point-one million here, the right-of-way acquisition, a big part of that is for the right-of-way acquisition, that's needed for the East Side Corridor, that's projected about sixty to eighty acres of land that we'll have to acquire for that project. And then utility relocations for, granted, it'll be a big project, a big year for us with twenty million dollars, so. Other projects in the, in the five-year plan here, next slide, just some of the big highlights beyond twenty-twenty-six and beyond, we have the East Side Corridor, obviously, that's currently scheduled for twenty-six and twenty-seven. We have a project on Main Street, that's scheduled, the piece of total reconstruction of, between Oak Avenue and, and Earl Street, that's currently scheduled for twenty-eight, a significant partner in that is our, is our, is the city of Owatonna, so when they're able to fund that, it's gonna be a big part of when we can do that project, but we should be starting a final design on that this year here. Heard about one of our worst intersections in the county, we had some public comment on that, this is a solution to that, we are working on a, a project here, we are in preliminary design right now, Casaw two and forty-three intersection, and just hot off the press, I just got, we just got that program for a, a public meeting here, October tenth, I believe, will be immediate release of input on that coming up soon, so you'll get to see some of the options that are approved back. And then we got some, the Barrow Bridge, the Low Underpass, they're only on, on eighty we're hoping they need in the next five years.
Oh, that prior one that, so Havana, one of Mr. Iverson was commenting on?
Yep, that's planned for construction in twenty-six, I think, it's gonna be a significant safety improvement of it, for sure.
And Paul, we are having a meeting at the hall over there?
Yep, October tenth, yeah, like I said, we just subdued the township today, I don't remember, the specifics of that will be out, I'll probably, you know, be looking for that, so. And not in the five-year plan, but projects that we're always, the needs are great, the resources are not many. We have long-range plans to continue belt lines on the northwest corner of the city of Owatonna, and then the east side continuing thirty, Twenty-Sixth Street out to County Forty-three, but those two parts of the belt line have alternate routes that right now are serving quite well to manage the traffic around those parts of the city. We have development pressures around the hospital on County Road twenty-three and County Road thirty-four, so we have projects to improve things up there. Again, largely driven by development, but we do know those developments are coming probably someday. And then a big, big issue is, we know the entire corridor, Hoffman, Oak, Cedar Avenue corridor is near the end of its life, and especially the, especially inside, the inner, the inner part of the city here along Oak Avenue, in particular, city utility infrastructure is near the end of its life, and it's, yeah, it's huge, huge projects that are going to need to be addressed sometime in the next ten to fifteen years, so. With that, it's kind of highlights of projects, like I said, this is a public hearing, taking testimony regarding the use of local option sales tax. Like I said, if local option sales tax isn't continued, it will fall on the property tax levy. I'd like to point out that this hearing is not intended to take comments specific to projects, we would ask that those comments be the best addressed to the various public meetings that we will have for all those projects. East Side Corridor will have a public meeting sometime late this winter, sometime this winter, maybe early next year. Highway twenty-eight project, we did have a public meeting here just a couple of weeks ago, there will be another public meeting scheduled to show the, the final plans and the construction stage in that project. There will be, as we start kicking off the final design for Main Street, there will be public meetings for that. And as I just mentioned, we have a public meeting scheduled at the, at the intersection at two and forty-three, so. So please, those comments would be best addressed to the project that, you know, public meetings are relevant to hearing, if anything, related to local option sales tax, so.
Did we receive any written comments?
Really, we know that the comments submitted us at four thirty this afternoon.
Would any public discussion or comments is related to the use of the sales tax?
Hi, my name is Gail Robinson, my address is two-forty-nine East Main Street, I'm right on Oak Grove, and I might not have the correct email address, you know, for my public comment, but besides that, pertaining to sales tax, I have a little business, I sell antiques and junk on eBay and Ruby and New One, and when sales tax is increased, people who are shopping pay very close attention to all the costs, so then your sales drop, when your sales drop, then your views drop, and your business starts going down. And I would imagine for anybody who sells online, where you're competing with vendors across the nation, the same is true. And many of our downtown businesses also have a presence on the internet. My, I would like you to consider, instead of raising the sales tax, considering lowering it, because the more sales we have, the more sales tax will be able to accrue. Now, somebody could have to do the math on it, but if you understand that principle, you know, that's gonna help a whole community. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we're not raising it, or lowering it, we're just adding projects that the funds that we're currently collecting could be used for.
That wasn't clear.
Sorry, so this has been the sales tax that's been in place for, I think, twelve?
I mean, so I want to deserve more, it gives you more money.
But it also means more money on your property taxes, because that's how the, the difference would be made up.
Well, it's one and seven the other.
How you pay for it. I just want to clarify, we're not, this is not a hearing to increase it, it's just to add projects that the sales tax could be used for.
Okay.
Melissa Zimmerman, twenty-five, twenty-five, Stony Creek Drive. I had written something more in regards to the East Side Corridor, as it contains the CIP, given that those are better fielded elsewhere, I'm assuming public comment will reopen after this is finished. But I would like to speak to the fact that I'm opposed to using the sales tax for projects that aren't safe. We have problems throughout, as we've heard tonight, throughout our county with unsafe roads, and we need to fix those roads before we build new ones, but using sales tax that doesn't address the safety, doesn't prioritize residents' needs and safety, and protect the people that already exist here. So that being the case, we should really look at the safety and the ability to keep our residents protected before we invest more sales tax into large projects that cost us dearly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Martin Spindler, I live on fifty-five, seventy-five, South East Fifty-Fourth Avenue in Aurora Township. And I got copies of the five-year plan from the highway department, and I looked it over, and there's a couple things I'd like to comment about. And the first one is on County, State aid highway number three, which goes from County Road forty-five to Highway two-eighteen, and I've seen on the paperwork that it isn't due for to Highway Two Eighteen, and I've seen on the paperwork that it isn't due for any kind of construction until twenty twenty-nine, and I know you have a certain criteria that roads are assigned for when they're due for upgrade, but if you look at the very west end of Three, it's in very, very bad shape right now, and, uh, I don't know how it's gonna last five more years, I guess that's my question on that one. And the next comment I have is regarding County Road Six, and there is a plan in here that is actually unscheduled, but it's a, a major rebuild from County Road One Fifty-Nine to Six, crossing several properties and adding a road, and it's a two point two million dollar project, and I know it says in here that while improvements would proactively address safety concerns due to existing low crash rates and low traffic volume, other projects have higher priority, so the project is unscheduled, and I understand that, but in my mind it's still this, why are we even thinking this when we got so much maintenance and so many other roads in this county that need addressing, and why should it even be in the flight? So, I guess that were my comments, thank you.
Anyone else? One more time, anyone else? All right, then we'll close the, uh, this portion of meeting the public discussion. Any further discussions? All right, the motion is ordered, it's in order to close the public hearing.
What's up?
Second. Motion is second to close the public hearing, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. That brings us back to public comment. Anyone wishing to make public comment?
Melissa Zimmerman, Twenty-Five Twenty-Five, Stoney Creek Drive. For thirty years, we've studied the east side corridor, and during that time, Thirty-fourth Avenue has consistently been a viable option. Now we're closer than ever to Thirty-fourth Avenue, but this year, it has been eliminated because we're told it won't move traffic, even though it's only thirty seconds farther. I appreciate the reduced speeds, forty miles an hour, and some of the proposed mitigations like noise wall, however, forty, forty miles per hour isn't enough when people are driving seventy to a hundred and fourteen miles per hour a day. Every week we hear about another serious accident on our roads. Our roads simply aren't safe, and that needs to be addressed first. Not, no one wants a noise wall, but if it's necessary for safety, we'll accept it. On page nine of the presentation, it stated that alternative three may, alternative three by varying east, north of Earl Street, avoids the impact from the neighborhoods, the neighborhood between Dan Road and Twenty-Sixth Street. I have to believe that's a typo and should be referencing the North Country subdivision. Why can we avoid homes farther away, but not those just fifteen feet from the rightway? Federal regulations require us to avoid impacts whenever possible. Why wasn't this option offered to the neighborhood with the greatest impact on families and children? We have the space to avoid, we must. It was, it's also noted that the plan can be deviated. Why aren't we considering that? How far should we, how far should we move it out? I assume most answers are in that al- alternative study, which according to the federal government should have been made public, but it hasn't been. Two point five years, where is the data? The public was supposed to have input on this report through an open house before decisions were finalized. Why didn't that happen? We've never built a road this close to homes in all of Still County history, so why now? There is room to avoid and make this safer, even at the Twenty-Ninth Street location. Let's find a compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Home Critic Rossman, I live on Twenty Seven Hundred, twenty-four thousand, twenty. I don't have a comment, I got it quick. Who's gonna benefit from that east side corridor? How many people are, this all come about because of the high school, right? They wanna get people to the north end of town in a speedy manner? They got Two Eighteen a quarter of a mile away, or, I mean, fourteen, and then Thirty-Five, and Speed Limiting out there, sixty-five and seventy. I, I don't understand it, anyway, that's my question.
Thank you, Kurt.
County Allen, Twenty Four Thirty-Five, Briar Place. Um, so tonight when we saw the deliverables, um, the statement of disqualification in there, it's completely devoid of any, uh, context, there's nothing to support that, that one bullet point that said four and five have been removed, so, from that, we can only take that it's subjective, because somebody thought that, I think the term they used in there was, um, alternatives four and five are removed primarily for not meeting the vehicle mobility needs, and I looked up what that means, and that's basically just, um, traffic flow or how far people have to go, and I think that was reinforced by the comments we were, that we heard tonight. Um, so somebody subjectively decided that it's just too far, like we said, thirty seconds further, um, and then when, when, um, our engineer, county engineer, Paul, got up there, the priorities in fact, as we all saw on that slide, I thought it was ironic that the first one was, was safety on there, so, again, I don't know if these are weighted as far as importance, but safety was the top one, the first one on that list, and so, um, but safety obviously didn't seem to be, didn't seem to make any of the criteria that, that would, that would, um, keep four and five in on that, on that list. Four and five would just dismiss out of hand right away, um, right, just, just dismissed in without any kind of context, so, um, I think that's been said by others, but I just wanted to put that in the comments, too, that we, you know, um, we deserve better as citizens to have some context and some, some explanation of that. Um, I know most of us in our jobs are not allowed to just make statements like that and just walk away from them, so we need to have answers for that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any other public comment? All right, if there's no further public comment, we're both leaving the public comment and moving to correspondence. This is in your board packet, there's some correspondence on page four, it's a letter from the Minnesota Board of Peace Officers Standards and Training Letter. If you haven't had a chance, you should read through that. Moving to consent agenda, does the board have any items that they wish to, uh, consent for more discussion? If there's none, the motion is noted. We're moving to the consent, consent agenda as, is that it? And the second, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, carries. All right, that brings us to the final portion of our agenda, Page Twelve, adopted resolution setting the preliminary net levy, net tax levy and budget for twenty twenty-five, that is on page fifty-three of your board packet. Hello?
Hi, Chair. Julie?
All right, you wanna, kind of, for those who were not in attendance, you wanna walk us through the, the options?
Yep. We provided the board four different options. The first option is with no adjustments. We had an increase in tax levy from prior to two million one hundred and ninety-two hundred and thirty dollars, which would equate to a seven point two percent preliminary tax levy increase. Option two is a hold-in period to the twenty twenty-four contribution rate. Right now, there's, the preliminary budget is showing a one hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollar increase year over year. That would put us at a six point eight percent property tax, or preliminary tax levy increase. The third option is to utilize the one point two million equity payment in the period for capital projects. If we did that, it would bring the levy down to the tax levy down to three point one percent. And option four is utilizing both options two and three, which will bring us to a two point seven percent levy.
So this has been discussed a couple of times in the budget meeting and then prior to this meeting at our work sessions. Boyd, have any questions on the options and what direction you want to go?
Well, Mr. Chair, my personal opinion is I think option three is the right way to go for a preliminary. Um, it leaves the money in the budget for me in the period, and we know they're gonna work, we're working on, um, maybe some more reductions there, but until we find out where that's at, I think that's a good safe gap to have it in there. Um, and, uh, I would propose that we use option three at three point one percent as our preliminary tax levy increase.
Are you offering the resolution?
Yes.
Second up?
Just for clarification, the resolution form that is being offered would be just set the preliminary net tax levy at thirty million, three hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars, and the total preliminary budget is set at sixty-six million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars.
And do we need to do roll call on that, or is it, can we just call both?
You can call both.
Yeah, definitely discussion. Discussion? Candy, if we, if we do this option, are you used to a, a cushion if there's something unforeseen from the town?
We would have a cushion of the general fund, and this would eliminate the cushion of the one point two million, which is coming out of the, initially came out of the general fund to pay through, so that money is going back into our general fund. So if something extraordinary happened, like we had a tornado come through, instead of having a one point two million available to pay for, uh, the, 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 the expense, we would end up digging into our general reserves, and we do have, we do have a healthy general reserve right now, so we do have some, we do have.
So we do have a healthy reserve in case of something unforeseen, thing happens, so.
Option three, I agree.
I guess a good, good start.
Yeah, I, I would concur, I, I think that option three is the best, uh, at this point, and the use of that one point two million, that, that was levy dollars initially, right? That's just levy money coming back to the county that we can use to offset a one-time capital project. I wouldn't be in favor of it for, let's say, let's say, to offset personnel costs or something like that, because that, that, that would come back to bite us, but I would agree, option three, in my mind, makes the most sense for, for the taxpayers and whatever we have currently. I thought there was some worksheet in here or something on what that actually means to the taxpayer. Do you have any?
There is a, we do have a sheet, there should be a residential property sheet, so looking at the, looking at the three point one levy, if you owned a two hundred thousand dollar home, all things remaining the same, you would see an estimated drop in your tax and property taxes of seventy dollars. If it was three hundred?
In the county share.
In the county share, correct. We have no control over the city or the school's districts or divisions. For the three hundred thousand dollar home, it would be a drop of eighty-eight dollars, and keep in mind the home state's spending, it increased this year over last year. And then for four hundred thousand, you would see an approximate hundred and seven dollar decrease. For five hundred thousand, which is where the expenditure drops off, you would see an eighty-nine dollar decrease, and for a six hundred thousand dollar home, you would see a hundred and three dollar decrease. Now, keep in mind the tax rate of a six hundred thousand dollar home is four hundred and three point two point two dollars, so that's why there's a double contribution for a six hundred thousand dollar home.
Pretty good. I think, uh, I think I've played my one record, and I think all of our department has been working hard to get us to this point, so, a lot of behind-the-scenes work that , that ran this, not only in the department, that's where all the county officials have stepped up, and, uh, done their part to really kind of offset the burden of the taxpayers, so that, uh, so it can lower that, that tax burden on this, this project.
I would say it's pretty clear, and they need to work very much, I think they've done a great job. You really presented, even, we've not, we would present to this degree the length that I've been on.
Any further discussion? All right, so the resolution has been offered to set the preliminary tax, preliminary tax levy for twenty twenty-five at thirty million, three hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars, and the preliminary total budget is set at sixty-six million, eight hundred and eleven dollars and forty-two cents. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, resolution passes.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
How much was I on? He said forty-three cents.
Four hundred and thirty-two dollars. All right.
Thank you. All right, number thirteen, reservation, running for twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine, Highway Capital Pearly.
All right.
Good evening, yeah, um, we've held a public hearing, how are you doing? Um, and, um, I'm forward to, uh, to, 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 So with, to make sure we got that interstate crossing set up for the crossing gates, we want to get the trail extended through there right away. So we're working on the agreements here. And so everything is moving on pretty well here. So we have the agreement here, very similar to the agreement we approved the last time around for the Rambo project. So yeah, very similar agreement for the crossing improvements here, so.
You're getting pretty good at these.
That is enough, yeah.
Yeah.
Is the agreement been reviewed by our legal counsel? Mr. Chair, I'd like one motion to approve the agreement with Canadian Pacific Kansas City Railroad for the crossing rules, County Road 180 and School Street. Motion by Nene and a second, or motion by, granted, a second by Nene. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign, motion carries. Next up, this is a tough one, this next one. The adopted resolution appointing Paul Scott as a Steel County Engineer, page 176, on the board package.
So like the assessor, we have certain statutory appointed officers. Paul has been approved as our new county engineer as a staff member. Now we formally needed a board resolution designating him as our county engineer to fulfill all of our statutory requirements.
You offered the resolution? You offered the resolution to the second. Second by Krieger. To appoint Paul Scott as a Steel County Highway Engineer. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign, resolution passes. Congratulations.
I just want to address or thank or recognize the incredible staff we have. Highway Department and the landfill, part of my duties, as you probably know, I do this landfill and with great staff and all these amazing things. They're out plowing snow, Christmas Day, and as of winter, they're out watching construction projects for us to sun up the sun down on the heat of the summer. Great things, countless jobs out there in the landfill. And we thank them all. I appreciate all their support. Thank you much as you see you.
Definitely will. Thank you. All right, next up is number 16, adopt a resolution reappointing Brian Anderson as a Steel County Assessor. It's page 178, your board package.
So, Mr. Chair, we have this weird situation where if we weren't going to reappoint Brian, we had to know if I could buy October 1. And then we still need to reappoint him because he was fulfilling a previous term that ends at the end of this year, and then you'd have to appoint him again. So we just decided we'd bring it to the board as a request to reappoint. And therefore, we addressed the October 1 notice date as well as the reappointment, and I would have to do this twice. So we're asking you to consider reappointing Brian Anderson as our assessor for another four-year term, starting January 1, 2025.
Any explanation on the four-year term?
I will move that resolution.
I'll second it.
Resolution has been offered and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign, resolution passes.
When did you do the whole office then?
I'll find out, he's not been tomorrow.
Back on this conference, right?
Yeah, we're good till January.
All right, next up is number 17, approved purchase of MDCs, local dispatch, uniform CCA, and the MDC to refresh the sheriff's, page 182, your board package. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chair?
Do you want to preface something that came up? Couple of things, number one, in our budget discussions, budget work sessions that we've had, one of the things that was raised was the potential threat, if you will, of dispatch actually wanting to increase fees associated with CCA because of the fact that they're creating, having to create various calls for them. And I think it was you, Mr. Abbey, that actually specified, is, asked a question, is there a technical solution for this? This is that technical solution, that's why we're talking about that tonight. The, basically what we're doing here, our IT department has been working with CCA, with Tim, with his staff, to review options for improving the efficiency of their field visits, to avoid unnecessary workload for dispatch and potentially all those costs that have been hanging out there as a threat. And then, you know, working with dispatch on that. We met last Monday, on 9/16, with dispatch, with Logis, who provides the software support that's for this various software, and from Jonathan from finance as well. View demonstrations of different products that can work with a Rice Steel Dispatch solution. And other solutions presented, the better choice is to equip both of our CCA vehicles, F2, with a mobile dispatch computer, similar to what we do with the sheriff's squad car. Solution will allow CCA staff to create their own calls, which significantly reduces the workload on dispatch during potentially busy time periods when they're beginning their visits. Provides improved security, improves secure communication with dispatch and other public safety agencies, including OTD and the sheriff's office, both of whom tend to, can we say, hover near locations when you're doing field visits. It provides better safety and visibility between staff and other agencies so that they know when those cars are there and when they're, when they can be expected. And it provides staff that ability to quickly report their findings while they're still fresh from doing the field visits, instead of having to wait until the end of their shift or whatever when they're coming back and reporting those things. There is some initial costs associated with that for two vehicles. It's roughly $1,255. Recurring costs are far more, far less impactful, that being about $1,280 per meter.
And that's that per vehicle?
No, it is both vehicles. So you have the MDC and docking station of the vehicles, the installation is an estimate on that. The software and setup, that's actually a firm number that was provided by Logis on that. And then there's VPN tokens that are required from a security perspective and have to be issued to each individual of CCA. The recurring cost being just regular software maintenance, it starts in the second year, not the first year. So there's a leveling there. And then the Verizon data we use to extend that to initial the money since we're currently at.
Do you have designated cars that you use with CCA?
What's that?
Do you have designated cars that you use?
So those are leased vehicles?
Those are leased vehicles.
Are we allowed to modify them like that?
And we're able to move them to the next new one?
Yes, we can. You may run into costs associated with the reinstallation that's associated with that. But by and large, all the rest of the pieces that go into that installation.
Who installs it?
The company is out of, out of CASM, same company that we utilize for.
So is the equipment specific to a make and model of vehicle? Or could fit in any, if we chose to switch from the edge to, let's say, we get Honda's because it makes more sense to them?
Yeah, some of the installation, if a company will work with them there and actually recognizes the differences in all the specific pro fit types of devices that we use, if they specifically.
So would you, you could do it right readily?
Yeah, you may be replacing some smaller components with it, but the docking station itself and the MDC, both would be utilized.
Tim, you feel that's going to address the ear needs? And ultimately, it's going to free up some calls going down?
Yeah, I think as we work to have a more of a field presence, I think, and it's kind of complicated, but as dispatch is struggling with staffing at times and on evenings where we have two groups out at once, and even if we don't have two groups out when it's busy. For example, a couple of weeks ago, when there was an accident on 26th Street, a gentleman hit a tree, there was a kid hit by a bike and blooming, there was a rollover that night, and we had groups out doing field visits. Well, we're trying to make calls in with our cell phones to dispatch. They were overwhelmed, they were confused on where we're at at times. And it puts our officers in a bad spot when they're confused on where we're at. And then they're making safety checks and people aren't really sure. That's just not the way it's supposed to be. So this platform will allow us to create those own calls and prevent addressing everyone to see exactly where we're at. That's my first concern is just the safety of our staff. On top of some of the efficiencies that Dave mentioned, a lot of times when we're going out and we're checking on 20, 25 clients a night, we come back, we have a lot of notes to input. We'll be able to have our CSDS or net input system in the car now, have the ability to put some of those notes in real time, which are more accurate. But at the same time, save some staffing time afterwards as well, making us more efficient.
One of the things to note too is the fact that when they do these visits, they are two people in that vehicle. So the person who's driving is likely to be typing to create the, the tip of the hand.
The other cool feature of the software is there's like a warning type tab where sometimes we're checking on people that have violent histories. And if law enforcement has had histories of guns, dangerous weapons, there's drug task forces casing out the house, we're able to hit on those dangerous warning histories and see what we're kind of getting into. Say it was a question of a dangerous weapon. Four days prior, our agents are able to see those alerts. Instead of relying on maybe a drug toward task force officer being on them, they can catch it where we're at or here and there again sometimes.
And the other thing that's, I think, absolutely fabulous among the two is the fact that resolves the issue where you have people that are monitoring the internet system, the encrypted internet system, that have been sharing that information inappropriately with people who are, that you're going to be dealt with.
Yeah, it's about safety. It's in our place. So how many employees are covered or safe? I found it interesting when I checked with some of my cohorts, if you will, commissioners in other counties, that I think something there, employees who are just unprotected. It's a little scary.
Yeah, it's kind of scattered across the state and all those other agencies off of it, just like we are. But seemingly in our direct area, not so much, unfortunately.
Of course, you guys go out a lot.
That's true. The other, the other second piece of this that I wanted, they're so closely related that I'm bringing them together. You need to separate them, be certain that you can, but the one who, at least, since they're both talking about MDCs and one that felt was good coming forward in the book of them. The second piece of that is the fact that we're completing our sixth year on most of our MDC and mobile dispatch computers in the sheriff's squad cars. They are a little past due. We use four-year refresh cycles on computers. These are actually beat up, even though they're tough computers, they're beat up a little harder than most. We've already swapped out hinges and things like that on the modern lids. So, but I wanted to at least bring that up. There was some confusion on one of the budget items that was listed with the sheriff's thing. We thought that that was covering the refresh or this portion of those this year. It was not. So we'd like to refresh 18 of the MDCs that are currently out there. That's the oldest of the ones, the ones that are basically already out that, that comes six years. And that does have a significant cost. It's not replacing docking stations, it's just replacing the MDCs themselves. Tim, reading those current and up-to-date, the cost on that was $54,000. Eventually, because we want to avoid that kind of surprise happening again in the future, we will move the refresh of those MDCs when we migrate that into an ICS budget so that it'll be spread out, we'll level that out over the next number of years. Takes a little bit of time to take big purchases and spread them out, but we'll, we'll work together to make that happen.
Do you, how many are there total if you're getting 18?
There's 22 currently.
Does it make sense to get 22 or not?
No, because some of them are much, much newer. And as, as different squads were added and such, then they're, they're.
Well, so there won't be 22 this time and 22 next time.
Right, we'll, we'll scrape those out, we'll hold them for at least four years, but we may hold a some of them for five so we can start spreading that out within a, you know, period of time as well. We've done some very large leveling within the areas of those computers. Get refreshed, we're going to have huge spikes like that. Now, the total ask for both of those projects combined is $66,255. This was not previously budgeted. However, we have unspent wages that are in IT, which we are very willing to utilize those from this year so that we can, I feel as both of these are very important.
Would it be enough to cover it?
Ax. Board's wishes?
Mr. Chair, I will only approve of the additional MDCs for CCA and the MDC refresh.
I'll second that. $66,255.
So we have a motion by Krieger and a second by Nene to authorize the IT director to purchase the MDCs for CCA and the sheriff's department is presenting. Any discussion?
I think the last line, the larger purchase, we should be able to negotiate additional discounts.
We definitely go after that.
Any others discussion?
And the thing I would add was thanks for the three departments actually working together.
I want to, I want to comment to Renee on that too. That was one of the points she was pointing out during these budget work sessions is that desire for the departments to work on solving the problems.
All right, anything else before I call a vote? Those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, same sign, motion carries. That brings us to number 18, approval. Thank you, guys. Approved CUP 440 for urban home occupation with four conditions based on findings of fact, page 184 of the.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi, yeah, before we unite, Mr. Herman, he has developed, I guess, what I describe as a weapon frame for a 1910 model handgun. He's looking for a federal firearms license to assemble these in his home. The frame that he's developed and other components, and the manufacturer offsite, he brings from home, just to his house and basically put it together with some tools, then ship them off to retailers to sell. So there's no manufacturing, no sales from home, just the assembly of these weapons. Most discussion, I guess, at the hearing was on the test firing of the weapon itself. So if you're putting together, you also check out, make sure they work. So there was a couple of neighbors that had some concerns with that. Neighbors are probably, I think, the closest was 15, they're a few away at one. Mr. Herman does do some recreational shooting for the property itself, so it's not that it's just going to add to that. He has to make 30, 40 rounds a week at the most. So with that, the planning commission did recommend approval with four conditions. One, that he must maintain that firearm license. Two, it had to do with the shootings, a little outdoor test firing between 7:00 PM and 8:00 AMs overnight. Those are hours that we use for other, other things where it's concerned with noise. Three, no retail sales from the site. And then four, he must develop by utilizing some of the black stop and bullet trap and test firing.
You want to add questions?
Sounds interesting.
Do you want, this is, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, nobody want to give any, or complain or anything about fireworks or.
Um, nobody has, no. There were, like I said, a couple of nearby neighbors that had seen weapons, seen.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to Mr. Herman if this, for this home occupation to accept this. Put these, the conditions.
And then finally, the back, approve the motion, is there a second?
I will second the acceptance of CUP 440 on the occupation.
So we have a motion and a second to accept or approve the CUP 440 with the conditions based on the findings of fact. Was there any discussion? No discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign, motion carries. No action items?
No, everything that, that require action was already placed on your agenda.
All right, so informational items, the minutes from the Public Works Committee from Monday, September 9, 2024, are on the board package, page 194. The planning commission minutes from Monday, September 9, 2024, page 196. And the public safety and health committee minutes from Wednesday, September 11, 2024, page 194, for the board package. No presentations? Is this the commissioner report, commissioner?
I attended the public safety and health committee meeting. Uh, September 11th, I had a smart bus meeting and the first day of AMC. September 12th, I had AMC Health and Human Services and Business Partnership Development meeting. 13th was AMC. 16th, I attended the county road safety presentation, which was fantastic.
It really was.
17th, we had Mincree Finance and Joint Powers Board. The 18th, we had our budget work session. And today, we had a closed session and our work session. You can listen.
Thank you. Renee, anything to report?
A couple of things, and for the benefit of the press, Steel County will be holding a truth and taxation meeting on December 3 at 6:00 PM. This is a change in practice. In the past, truth and taxation has been done as part of a regular board meeting. We are now going to call a special board meeting specifically to hear the public's comments with regard to the budget and preliminary levy. So again, December 3 at 6:00 PM. I also attended the AMC meeting. One of the sessions that I went to was specifically related to the two different grants that the county received, and there were some different options. That's why I wanted to have a policy conversation with the board in terms of how you want to use those funds. I made a presentation at the Friday morning exchange club. I met with the Newland County City Administrator yesterday, and I will be meeting with the Medford City Administrator on Thursday.
Thank you.
All right, commissioner.
I attended the AMC on the 11th, 12th, and 13th of September. On the 16th of September, I attended the county safety meeting for the highways. On the 18th, we had a budget meeting downstairs here. On the 19th, I had union negotiations with the 911 Joint Powers Board. And yesterday, I had Human Relations Center. Today, we had a workshop and before the board here and a closed session. Nothing else.
I will report next meeting. I know they're at home as well. So next meeting notices, Internal Central Services, Wednesday, October 2 at 8:00 AM in the boardroom. Property and Maintenance Committee will meet Thursday, October 3 at 8:00 AM in the boardroom. County Board Work Session is Tuesday, October 8 at 4:00 PM in the boardroom. And our next county board meeting is Tuesday, October 8 at 5:00 PM in the boardroom. There's a standing motion as an order to.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, Nene is adjourned. Thank you all.